Okay, we will restart our council meeting. Starting with item three, which is public comment for items not on the agenda. With a time limit of three minutes per speaker, do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment? Either here, in the Nat U Hill Room, or on Zoom? I see no takers, so we will move to item four, which is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? All right. Then it's adopted, and we move to department updates. Do we have any departments that wish to make an update at this time? I didn't say this, but if you're on Zoom, feel free to raise your hand, and we can promote you promptly. All right. Blazing ahead, we have council liaison updates. Are there any council members who would like to provide an update? Oh my goodness, look at us go. Now, we will begin with our legal department and the general obligation bond, item number seven.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2022-36, ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, and ordinance 2022-37, appropriation ordinance for the general obligation bond, which are outlined in the ordinances contained in the council's meeting packet. These ordinance were read into the record the September 27, 2022 work session.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cockrell.
Well, thank you. I guess we went through this pretty thoroughly at the last meeting, so I'm here if you have questions, and I think Angie Purdy is probably on Zoom at this meeting as well, if you have any questions about the projects.
Okay, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Purdy?
Just wondering what rate you're predicting at this point?
All right, I have not heard any different than last time. I think the last time we thought they were both this one and the next one would be about 3%.
Three?
We hope to close before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Any comments or questions to my left? I forgot to look this direction. Okay. All right. Public comment. Is there any public comment on the general obligation bond? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed, majority six to one.
Now we move to item 7B.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2022-34, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of local income tax revenue bonds and bond anticipation notes, which is outlined in the ordinance contained in the council's meeting packet. This ordinance was read into the record at the September 27, 2022 work session.
Second.
Sorry, jumped the gun a little bit. Similar to the last one, I think we had a really in-depth conversation at the last council, at the council work session. In addition, I talked, discussed this bond with the community justice committee, response committee, sorry. They've changed the name, and I always get caught up on the first word, and I kind of, and so we gave an update there as well. I will say, last night, we had the first hearing at the City Plan Commission. They had some questions, of course. This is a big question, big topic, and we're going to have the second hearing on that on November 14th, at last night's meeting, and I hope this came out at the CJRC meeting before. I'm working with David Gardner, who does our maintenance at the current justice facility, to get some of the grass there trimmed down and have council elected officials, the CJRC, and this, anybody from the city who wants to come to just kind of go out and look at the property. I think that is, that will help answer a lot of questions people have. I know it's not directly related to the band question before you, but I thought that would be a pretty good update for you guys to have. But again, if you have any questions, something that wasn't clear last time, I'm more than happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cockrell? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Just a comment, because I've been getting a lot of pushback on this, saying, why on earth do we need to spend that kind of money for a jail? And we don't need that kind of size of property just for a jail. Correct?
Our consultants, who were doing our site assessment, indicated that we needed at least 25 acres for a jail facility. A lot of that's drainage, some of that's parking. I guess my response is, need is a tenuous term there, and my feeling is that when we looked at a larger site than the minimum, because when we did the search, we couldn't find any available space. I mean, really, this is the only one within the city of Bloomington limits, and so we wanted to make sure we had plenty of space there for the next reiteration, so that, you know, our, my predecessors, and maybe even yours, won't have to go through a large, search for a large piece of property in the future. So, for current jail needs, this is larger, but I think if we expand that to future needs for a jail, because as much as we like it, jails don't last forever. This is part of this, and I also think there's other things in our criminal justice review and our studies that have other needs that we need, that I think everyone's going to be looking at and utilizing, and maybe this would be appropriate place for that, maybe it wouldn't be.
I would just like to remind you that we already did this once. We bought 80-some acres for jail and other issues as well. We're still setting on that property, and now we're buying another property with huge amount of acreage, and I think it's a lot to be setting on both of those. And both times, we were hearing, oh, that's a great place to put a jail. And so, I listened carefully to the people who were speaking to me, and they were concerned, and I don't represent my thoughts, I have to represent theirs as well. So, I wanted to share that as well with you.
Counselor McKim?
First of all, I just want to say, Mr. Cockrell, you did an exceptionally good job last night presenting to the City Plan Commission. I was very impressed, and also, I think you just made a really important point that needs to be reiterated, and that's that we're not just buying property for the jail that we know we need to build, but the next one after that, so that we, so that we don't have to go through all this again. So, as you pointed out, and as, you know, I think everybody who's talked to us about jails has pointed out, jails don't last very, or they don't last as long as other buildings of the equivalent square footage, they're beat up more. And, and so, you know, we have to be thinking about, about that as well. The acreage is, especially in the city, is only going to be harder to come by in 30 years when we have to build the next jail. So, I think this is, I think this is one of the answers to some of the concerns that Counselor Hawke is raising.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, Mr. Cockrell, with the action here that we're poised to take on this ban note, will we be conveying this information to the Justice Department, or any other partners that are looking for action on our behalf to rectify the current jail situation?
If I understand correctly, I think the answer to that question is, this ban, bond anticipation note is for a site, is for purchasing a site and other related items towards the purchase, such as, you know, including expenditures we've already had with the site assessment, the phase-one environmentals, and all the geology study, you know, those kind of things, plus, if there's anything left over, a little bit for the design work. So, this is purely capital money, this wouldn't be able to be utilized for other programming or services. I think that was your question, and I hope I answered.
If I could clarify, just real quick, I meant more, can this action be used to show progress toward a goal?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is a step along that path.
Okay, thank you.
And will it be meaningful to the DOJ, I think is what he's implying?
Well, at this point, we're really worrying with the, or we're really under the guise of our agreed order, is with the Indiana Civil Liberty Union, and I think they would see this as a progressive step forward. He had emailed me a while back, and I gave him an update that, you know, we had identified a property, we're going through the appropriate steps to determine if that is the correct property, including working with the City Plan Commission, and thank you, I always feel a little nervous talking in front of city officials for some reason. So, I think this is all part of that process, and I think he's been made aware that here is where we're at in that process.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, I also appreciate everything you're doing, and for the record, I also get a little nervous talking in front of city people myself. My question to you in the night, I've got a comment after that, but my question is, if, just hypothetical, somebody watching at home, or us watching here, if we would not do anything, let's say we just say, I'm going to sit on this, I'm not going to do anything for a long, long time, there is a possibility that the courts or someone not from this county picks how this works for this county, this community. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and that's actually happened in Vigo County. I think that's one of the things we want to avoid. I also think we want to avoid what has been in our report, which is not being able to provide a constitutional level of care for, for the people in our custody. I think that is, that is a direct, that's the result of not addressing that unconstitutionality concern, is that it will go to the courts, and they will correct it, and they will correct it, and we won't have as much ability to determine how that correction occurs.
Right. One of the things I would just say is a kind of a follow-up comment, and I appreciate you just kind of laying that out, and I've kind of been trying to make that point, is sometimes in our community, you know, we're happy with judicial decisions, and sometimes we are not, but there's nothing like that decision being made right here, in this sort of spirited process, where public can comment, local officials can be engaged versus otherwise. And I'd even follow that up further, trying to, you were talking about finding a location and the difficulties of that, given current circumstances, I'd go even one step further. It is hard in this community to find a place for a new home to go into, that neighbors are okay with, and that everybody invests in, and nobody's got a dispute, and all the rules work, and creek don't rise, and all that good stuff. And so, my point is, sometimes in this community, I've noticed, we get a little funny about details on new things coming up, and kind of miss the point that we've had a lot of new people coming here, and that is a blessing and a great thing for us. This is not an easy place. I think we found a good spot, or as good as what we're going to find, given everything, given that it was hard for us to replace a post office 12 years ago in the downtown sector, let alone this. And I just, I want that to kind of come back around to people, because I think sometimes we're sitting at the restaurant, looking for a menu to order off, that it may not be available to us, and I think this is a good thing in that regard.
And maybe in response, we started looking at downtown, right? When we first started looking for property, we started looking downtown, and I said this at the Plan Commission meeting last night, you know, 10 years ago, you know, when, when we were thinking about this, and, you know, we have the Thompson site, but we, I had just toured the Martinsville facility, the Morgan County Jail, and they're on about six, they were on at that point in time, six, seven acres. I don't know what it is now, I don't know if it's changed or anything like that. Really, the only vacant spot outside of Thompson, which Commissioner Hawke had referenced earlier, was the scrapyard. The only downtown spot was basically the old scrapyard, and that had a very irregular shape, and I'm like, I don't even know if that would work. There just isn't that kind of space downtown. I mean, when people say, well, we would rather have it downtown, I'm like, well, of course we would, but we just don't have that space available.
Thank you very much.
Are there other comments or questions? I had a question, and I'm just maybe not remembering, have we gotten all of the appraisals, and are we still waiting on?
The second appraisal is due on October 18th.
Okay, so we are still waiting on that. Okay. Any other, did that spur something? Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, but just to clarify, that appraisal, the results of that appraisal could only lower the price we could pay, not raise it.
It could not raise the price. If it comes in lower, we'll have to go talk with the property owner.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we can ask for public comment at this point? If there's any public comment online, please raise your hand. Any pub comment here? No? Okay, seeing none, then could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed, majority six to one.
Thank you.
All right, now we are moving to item number eight, with our Parks and Recreation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Parks and Recreation Department's request for an additional probation fund 1,000, 0803, general fund parks of $20,000 in the capital category.
Second.
And we have Kelly Whitmer, our Parks Director here. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
We're here for additional $20,000 to purchase two new zero-turn mowers. We will be trading in our two oldest mowers. This is the best deal I have seen in decades, and we've also purchased a month ago, a couple porta toilets, and if we do come in under budget, which, what I mean, under budget, like $500 or so, we would like to purchase a couple additional benches for the Cars Farm Green bike. Yes.
Can you, can you adjust your mic, so you're speaking into it? Thank you.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty. Anything else you need to know?
I don't have any questions. Do you have questions?
Questions? Yes.
So, would you please tell us when you anticipate the completion of the trail segments that are just now wrapping up and almost finished?
We're waiting for the railroad signals to be installed at Losch Road. The railroad company said mid-October, we're mid-October, they're still not installed, so I keep saying, maybe late October. As soon as they're up, we will tell everyone, we'll pull down the fences, and we're ready to go, and it'll be open to the public from Cars Farm Park to Ellisville, which is 7.2 miles.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Questions or comments to my right?
I just wanted to say that I'm hearing from a lot of people how much they're enjoying all the work that's been going on toward the Ellisville area, and much appreciated. So, I'm looking forward to being able to get out there when my family comes home, we can take a little walk, because I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the fact how hard you worked to keep the parks looking so great for people to use, and keeping it clean and well-maintained, and that's important, and these mowers and all of your equipment, it's what it takes.
I do want to add, the Flatwoods Park will be getting a new playground, and we hope if everything is good with the bond, we'll be getting a new restroom at Flatwoods, too. So, it'll be getting quite a facelift, and I believe the folks over there will be very pleased.
Fantastic. Go ahead.
What is the schedule on the restroom at Flatwoods?
Does this mean the bond passed?
Yeah, it just passed.
Oh, I can get working on that right away, as soon as, I guess Jeff Cockrell says I can spend money.
I mean, does it take like six months, or a year?
No, no, we do the prefab ones, very similar, if not identical, to the Cars Farm Park splash pad. They design it, they pick it up with a crane, and they put it in place, we have the plumbing, and it's ready to go the next day. So, I can go through this process pretty quickly.
Fantastic.
Flush toilets in running water.
Good stuff.
Good stuff.
Good stuff.
As Marty says, keep them clean, and we're talking about mowers.
That is, that is what we were talking about. Are, is, are there any more questions or comments for Ms. Whitmer? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, we'll buy him tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that brings us to number nine, from Court Services.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for a category transfer in Fund 1,000, 0225, general fund courts, in the amount of $78,718.45 from the personnel category to the services category.
Second.
Yes, Steve, can you please promote Lisa Abraham to a panelist?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't see myself on the screen, so I will make sure you can hear me. It should come as no surprise that I'm before you, once again, to ask for additional money in the special services due to, this time it's both mental health and interpreting services. The amount that I'm asking for is coming out of the salary line, but they are due to excess money in line items from people leaving at a high level and coming back in at a lower level. It's also one that we have, through the WIS study, the county council lowered someone from a higher amount down, so I do have plenty of extra money. My mental health invoices, I look today, I right now have 11 outstanding invoices to be paid, again, they average about 1,500 each, but I'm sure more coming down the pike yet before the end of the year. I've already spent out my court interpreter grant, that I had started with a little over $7,000 beginning of the year, and that ended, I spent every penny of it at the end of last quarter, so all the rest of my interpreter services will have to come out of the special services line also. So, I figured it was best to go and just take what I can out of the extra salary lines that I do have, and put it in my special services. I did transfer already $18,000 in September, and I'm still getting close to wiping that out before the end of the year, so I'm definitely going to be needing some more. So, I'm asking you today for me to transfer that, so I will have enough to outlast hopefully all the rest of my invoices for the rest of the year.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from counsel on this? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I just wanted to tell you that as I was going over the agenda, and I saw that how hard you worked to make sure that you were moving money, where you had the extra money, and it reminded me, that's the way all the departments used to do, and I want to encourage the other departments to sort of take a look at how hard you worked to move money around, rather than asking for an additional, because that's the way it's supposed to work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? I believe then we need to do a roll call vote, and so could we do that?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're at item 10, with the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1,159000, health fund, to add account line 16801, temporary transitional training line, with a category transfer of $1,707 from the services category to the personnel category, and to simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinance, with the account line information is set out on the agenda.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Counsel.
Thank you. So, this request is for anticipation for hiring a new clinic manager for futures, family planning clinic. This will allow overlap and training from October 17th through October 28th, to allow for a smoother transition of this role.
Sounds good. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? All right, so this is right in line with what we've been recommending, actually, so that's terrific, and is there any public comment? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And we are at item 11, with the Building Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Building Department's request for a midpoint hire of the Residential Office Manager in Fund 1,000, 0312, general fund building, and to simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinances, account line 1,0042, 35 hours comment C, non-exempt, to a midpoint hire status, with an effective date of October 10, 2022.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Larue.
I might get this right this time.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's right, you can pull it up a little bit, since you're a little bit tall, there you go.
Nice to see you all again, I feel like I'm here every two weeks, I hope the evening's going well for you. Yeah, we, we have recently filled the Residential Office Manager position. The Office Manager came from the city, and has worked as an Office Manager in the city for 25 years. The list of responsibilities is a near-perfect and identical match to what we needed in the office, I couldn't have asked for a better match, and she has stepped right in and filled the role beyond expectation for the first three weeks. I think this is a good move for our department and the county.
All right, are there questions and comments from counsel?
Did, Michelle, did you and E review the?
Yes, we did, and we did verify that this person does more than qualify for the three-year midpoint hire, and that, that was reflected in the packet as well.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Questions or comments? Anyone else? No? Yes?
I'm just delighted that we have people who've decided, yes, Monroe County Government, that's a great place to work. I think we need to get that message out to a whole lot of people.
I think it is a great place to work. I came here thinking I didn't want to be a building inspector, and I've stayed for almost 15 years, it's just been a good, a great place, I really appreciate it.
Good to know. Is there any public comment on this item? Hey, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great. And now we're at number twelve with the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of two hundred thousand dollars from Fund 1169-0000 Local Road and Streets to Fund 8163-0000 Hunter's Creek Road Phases Two, Three, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in Fund 8163-0000 Hunter's Creek Road Phases Two and Three in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in the Services category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. It's pretty self-explanatory. We're taking from our local road and street budget to put into the grant line. We'll be close to closing out that project over the next year. So we're required when we're done with that PO with NDOT to have a zero balance in those lines. So this is where we try and start finishing out the project and getting everything closed up and coming to a zero balance.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from counsel? I don't see any. All right. Is there any public comment on this item? And with no public comment, we will move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Have a good night. Oh, I'm still on your agenda.
There's more. Sorry, Kate.
I haven't scrolled down, sorry. Oh, goodness. Oh, you're right. All right, moving on.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Fund 1135-0000 Cumulative Bridge to Fund 8170-0000 Dillon Road Bridge Number Eighty-three, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation to Infund 8170-0000 Dillon Roach Bridge Number Eighty-three in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand in the Services category.
Second.
Same thing.
It is the same thing. This bridge was awarded in the last NOFA call, which would have been actually last November. They award those in the spring. So this was for the bridge replacement for Bridge Eighty-three. We have a design contract in place, so this should cover our twenty percent because it's an eighty-twenty split with NDOT. So this will get us moving on design. It's a construction year, a fiscal year, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. Yes.
And we might be able to use this bridge for a trail.
That is our goal, is to repurpose this bridge, the Trust Bridge, onto one of the trails, so.
That's great.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
It's a cool bridge.
Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, and stop.
Are we getting to about the time when we can't cut any more trees down for a little while with the bats?
That runs from October
Well, it's about time.
Thirty-first through April first. So yeah, between that window, like November first through April first is the bat window. And so, no, we cannot cut any trees after that point.
All right. Other comments or questions? Okay, is there any public comment on the item? Then could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request in Fund 1176-0533 Butter Vehicle Highway General and Undistributed to create a new account line, four zero 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 one Equipment, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of fifty-six thousand dollars in the Capital category.
Tell us a little bit about this.
So our heavy equipment lift that's in the highway garage currently is twenty-five years plus old. It was built with the original garage in nineteen ninety-five. Some of the parts are starting to become obsolete, so we want to have a backup system, so they have what they call column lifts, and they're portable. It's not set in one bay, so we can move them around to for to the other bays. So this is our current, I guess, option to go with. A new lift is probably going to be more in the two hundred thousand dollar range, but this is also, this is something we'll be able to keep and also replace the permanent lift and then also have the portable lifts also.
Let's see. Are there questions or comments from counsel? Nothing here. Okay. Any public comment on the item? Then may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now you may have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're at item thirteen, the Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request in Fund 9103-9623 Project Safe Place to deappropriate one hundred and sixty dollars in the Services category.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Larue.
Thank you so much. There, I think that's better. All right, thank you so much. Again, I'm back still part-time administrative staff at the Youth Services Bureau. To my right here is the new Deputy Director, Vanessa Schmidt. She's been with the agency for about a decade, serving as a Safe Place Coordinator, and then the Program Coordinator, and now she's moving into Deputy Director role. So she's here with me because to meet all of you and see how this process goes. And so you'll be seeing her from now on instead of me, but we want to talk about the deappropriation. Let's get straight to that. We found out after the fact that actually we are going to be getting one hundred and sixty dollars less because National Safe Place fees increased and IYSA pays that money before they send us our money. So we have to deappropriate that. Apologies for the mistake.
Okay, well, that makes perfect sense, and welcome. It's good to see you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? All right. Is there any public comment on the one hundred and sixty-dollar item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yeah.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And we are now on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request in Fund 8120-9623 Runaway and Homeless Youth Grant to create new account lines and set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars in the Personnel category, six thousand dollars in the Supplies category, and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars in the Services category, for a total of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, so we're seeking to appropriate the second year of this grant. Our non-compete continuation application was accepted in September, and so this is the first time we've had the opportunity to come try to have this money appropriated, so we can start using it. Yeah, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, are there questions or comments? Yes, come from?
I just wanted to welcome Vanessa and say thank you for your work with Safe Place, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Any other?
So you have one more year of non-compete?
Yeah, so this will run through. We will do another non-compete next spring. And then assuming it'll be approved, then that would run us through to twenty-three, twenty-four. And in twenty-four, we will have to reapply.
We compete for another three years. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? And is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Oh, yes. Where do you plan to? If this goes through, I expect the two thousand dollar retention bonus from what? On some of these grants, will you be trying to get them out of the grants, or how will that work?
Well, we won't be able to amend the award for the grant. I mean, we could probably do some transfers. I would have to talk to Vicki about that, what her plan is to do that specifically. I just don't have the information, but we can get that to you as soon as we can.
Thank you. Thanks. And now we're at item fourteen from the Auditor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's request for an additional appropriation in Fund Curry Profile TIP four nine three four zero 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 zero, of four hundred dollars in the Services category.
Second.
And Ms. Gregory, are you going to speak with us?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, hello, counsel. So this is just a housekeeping item. This is an expense that Cook actually covers until this begins generating revenue. So we actually already received the money from Cook, simply need the appropriation for the permission to spend and pay the bill.
All right, are there any questions from counsel? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Sure, and we are now at item fifteen with the first reading of our twenty twenty-three budget, item A. Oh, boy, I get to do this, don't I? We will now be reading the twenty twenty-three budgets for the Monroe Fire Protection District, the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, and Monroe County Salary Ordinances for twenty twenty-three. There's a lot of reading involved. So I've asked several of the counselors to go ahead and assist with tonight's reading, and Counselor Crossley, will you please begin with Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty, Monroe Fire Protection District, twenty twenty-three budget?
Ordinance twenty-two dash forty, excuse me, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of the Monroe County, the Monroe Fire Protection District for the year ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressed, stipulated, and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenues to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form four dash B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Fund code, Fund Code eighty-six zero three, Fund Name, Special Fire General, adopted budget, thirteen million, nine hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Adopted tax levy, eight million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars, with an adopted tax rate of zero point two five three zero. And eighty-six point, oh, I'm sorry, eighty-six ninety-one, Special King Fire. Adopted budget, one million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six. Adopted tax levy, one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six, with an adopted tax rate of zero point zero three three three. With a total, a total adopted budget of fourteen million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Adopted tax levy amount total of nine million, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, eight, nine million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen, with an adopted tax rate of zero point two eight six three.
Are there any further questions or comments from counsel regarding the twenty twenty-three Monroe Fire Protection District budget? No? All righty then, we will then go ahead and move to Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, Monroe County Solid Waste Management, twenty twenty-three budget. And Counselor Munson, will you please read that?
Yes, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Fund twelve fifteen, non-reverting capital projects, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate, zero point zero 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 zero. Fund eighty-two ten, special solid waste management, adopted budget, two million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Adopted tax levy, two million, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero two nine five. Fund eighty-two eighty-three, solid waste district depth service. Three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. For the adopted budget, adopted tax levy, three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero zero four two. For a total adopted budget of three million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand and one dollar. A total adopted tax levy of two million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And a total adopted tax rate of zero point zero three three seven.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from counsel regarding the twenty twenty-three Monroe County Solid Waste Management budget? All right then, we will move then to Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-two, which is the Monroe County twenty twenty-three budget. Counselor McKim, will you please read that budget for us?
I will. Everyone might want to, I don't know, curl up with a drink or something like that. Counsel, I move adoption of Ordinance two oh two two dash forty-two, Ordinance for Appropriation Tax Rates. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the sums herein specified and hereby appropriated and ordered set apart of the general, the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated will be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue- the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Fin- Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Fund 0101 General, adopted budget 44,660,019 dollars, adopted tax levy 24,623,802 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.2496 dollars per 100 dollars of assessed value. All tax rates are per 100 dollars of assessed value. Uh, Fund 0102, election registration, adopted budget 1,112,314 dollars, adopted tax levy 780,760 dollars, adopted tax rate point 0079. Uh, Fund 0124, 2015 reassessment, adopted budget 836,654 dollars, adopted tax levy 423,137 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0043 dollars. Uh, debt ser- uh, Fund 0180, debt service, adopted budget 3,500,000 dollars, adopted tax levy 3,500,000 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.03555 dollars. Uh, Fund 0183, bond number three, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Fund 0254, local income tax, adopted budget 3,838,519 dollars, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Uh, Fund 0616, Convention and Visitors Bureau, adopted budget 2,307,297 dollars, adopted tax levy zero dollars, adopted tax rate zero. Fund 0702 Highway, adopted budget 6,509,413 dollars, adopted tax levy zero dollars, adopted tax rate zero dollars. Fund 0703 Highway Special, um, adopted budget zero dollars, adopted tax levy zero dollars, and adopted tax rate zero dollars. Uh, Fund 0706, Local Road and Street, uh, adopted budget 820,001 dollars, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Uh, Fund 0790 Cumulative Bridge, adopted budget 1,851,386 dollars, adopted tax levy 2,101,059 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0213 dollars. Uh, Fund 0792 County Major Bridge, adopted budget 2,856,992 dollars, adopted tax levy 3,284,500, uh, 754 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0333 dollars. Uh, Fund 0801 Health, adopted budget 2,54,819 dollars, adopted tax levy 1,152,54 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0117 dollars. Uh, Fund 1310 Park Non-Reverting Capital, adopted budget 60,000 dollars, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Fund 2102 Aviation Airport, uh, adopted budget 1,373,047 dollars, adopted tax ra- uh, tax levy 690,452 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0070 dollars. Fund 2391 Cumulative Capital Development, adopted budget 4,346,635 dollars, adopted tax levy 3,284,754 dollars, adopted tax rate 0.0333 dollars. And Fund, uh, 2402 Economic Development, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero, for a total adopted budget of 76,127,96 dollars, adopted tax levy of 39,840,772 dollars, and adopted tax rate 0.4039 dollars. And those were the, uh, the DLGF-controlled funds. Uh, here are the homewalled funds, not, not reviewed by DLGF. Uh, Fund 9500 extradition and sheriff's assistance, adopted budget 609 dollars. Uh, Fund 9501 Surveyors Corner Perpetuation, adopted budget 1,144,464 dollars. Uh, Fund 9502 Juvenile Per diem, adopted budget zero dollars. Monroe County Fund, uh, 9503 Monroe County 911 Fund, adopted budget 652,000 dollars. Uh, Fund 9504 Monroe County Convention Center Debt, adopted budget 636,000 dollars. Uh, Fund 9505 Auditors and Eligible Deductions, adopted budget 262,265 dollars. Uh, Fund 9508 User Fee Jury Pay, adopted budget 24,500 dollars. Uh, Fund 9509 User Fees Juvenile Probation, adopted budget 18,883 dollars. Uh, Fund 9510 User Fees Adult Probation, adopted budget 238,339 dollars. Uh, adopted budget, uh, their budget 9511 User Fees Project Income. Adopted budget 545,596 dollars. Fund 9512 Supplemental Public Defender Services, adopted budget 1,151,987 dollars. Budget, uh, not fund 9513 Clerks Record Perpetuation, adopted budget 135,580 dollars. Fund 9514 User Fees Diversion, uh, Prosecutor, uh, Fund, adopted budget 1,134,715 dollars. Fund 9515 User Fees Court Alcohol Drug, adopted budget 180,088 dollars. Fund 9516 Local Health Maintenance, adopted budget 143,878 dollars. Uh, Fund 9517 Emergency Planning Right to Know, adopted budget 10,150 dollars. Fund 9519 Misdemeanant County, uh, County Corrections, Fund, uh, adopted budget 137,300 dollars. Fund 9521 Alternative Dispute Resolution, adopted budget 14,700 dollars. Uh, Fund 9522 Sales Disclosure County Share, adopted budget 65,343 dollars. Uh, Fund 9523 Convention Visitors Capital Improvement and Maintenance Fund, uh, adopted budget 100,000 dollars. Fund 9524 County Offender Transportation, adopted budget 3,000 dollars. Fund 952, uh, nine, nine 525 Local Health Department Trust Account, uh, adopted budget 75,222 dollars. Fund 9526 User Fees Problem-Solving Courts, adopted budget 50,507 dollars. Uh, Fund 9527 Westside Economic Development Richland Township Tiff, adopted budget 2,188,863 dollars. Uh, Fund 9528 46 Corridor Economic Development Bloomington Township Tiff, uh, adopted budget 290,925 dollars. Fund 9529 Forte Pike Economic Development Tiff, uh, adopted budget 150,000 dollars. Fund 9530 Plat Book, adopted budget 84,122 dollars. Uh, Fund 9531 Convention Center Operating, adopted budget 594,000 dollars. Uh, Fund 9532 User Fees Cable Franchise, adopted budget 3,000, 3,388,430 dollars. Uh, Fund 9535 PSAP Interlocal, adopted budget 2,585,000. Fund 9543 Public Health Emergency Fund, adopted budget 20,000 dollars. Fund 9544 Identity, Identification Security Protection, adopted budget 18,000 dollars. Fund 9548 Parks Non-Reverting Operating, adopted budget zero dollars. Fund 9551 Recorders Records Perpetuation, adopted budget 309,413 dollars. Adopted, uh, Fund 9552 Stormwater Management, adopted budget 2,539,221 dollars. Fund 9559 County Elected Officials Training Fund, adopted budget 18,000 dollars. Fund 9571 Public Safety Lit, adopted budget 3,797,175 dollars. Fund 9588 Federal Award Title 4D, adopted budget 52,584 dollars. And Fund 9589 Curry Profile Tiff, uh, adopted budget 50, uh, 48,549,000 dollars for a total of, uh, of home rule funds, adopted budget of 17,809,408 dollars.
Thank you. That was amazing and very much appreciated. Are there any questions or comments from counsel on our 2023 Monroe County budget? Okay, seeing none. Um, and if there are no further questions or comments or actions, the first reading of the 2023 budget is closed. And we move to item 16 on the agenda, which is the first reading of the Monroe County 2023 Salary Ordinance. Um, and the first, um, the first item A is the Salary Ordinance, Ordinance for Elected Officials. And I believe, uh, that Counselor Iverson, would you please read the 2022-43A 2023 Salary Ordinance Elected Officials?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Uh, 2023 Monroe County Elected Official Salary Ordinance, an ordinance adopting Monroe County, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for elected officials, ordinance 2022-43A. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code 36-2-3, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County, and whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3 grants the Monroe County Council the power to one, fix the number of officers, deputies, and other employees; two, describe and classify positions and services; three, adopt schedules of compensation; and four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules and compensation. Whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish compensation schedules and pay policies, now be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, that this ordinance affixes the number and compensation for elected officials of the county from the period of January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, whose salaries composed of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code Section 36-2-5 are hereby solidly fixed in the following ma- maximum level of salary shown on salary compensation grid. All payments made pursuant to ordinance are contingent upon district compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. For elected officials, time worked on or after January 1st, 2023 and prior to midnight of December 31st, 2023 shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the salary ordinance and personal policy handbook regardless of when the payment is issued. Elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the elected official salary compensation grid. The county auditor shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in salary ordinance. The compensation amounts listed are an annual appropriation amount. Calculation of the biweekly rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year end. 2023 Retention Bonus Supplemental. Elected officials are not eligible to receive the 2023 Retention Bonus Supplemental. In addition to elected officials, the chief public defender will be ineligible to receive the 2023 Retention Bonus Supplemental as the salary and compensation of the chief public defender is the same as the salary and compensation of the elected prosecutor. Elected official base rate schedule. In order to establish a more equitable system of setting compensation for Monroe County elected officials not set by the state, the county council will be setting a base rate for elected officials and salary, schedule of amounts to be applied. The base rate schedule is outlined in Section 1 of the elected official salary compensation grid. The chief public defender is excluded as the salary and compensation is the same as salary and compensation of the elected prosecutor. The sheriff is excluded from the base rate schedule as his or her salary is paid pursuant to Indiana Code 36-2-13-2.5 or Indiana Code, uh, 36-2-13-2.8. Additional information regarding payments, certifications, supplementals, and repair DMs are outlined in Section 2 of the elected officials' pay compensation grid. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries, tied to state mandated salaries. The annual salaries for the Monroe County Sheriff is tied or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe County Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1st. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the county council which are tied or related to the Monroe County Sheriff is mandated by the state of Indiana, shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The county council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county salaries, which are generally modified on January 1st, presented to the county council of Monroe County, Indiana by induction in full for the first time this 11th day of October 2022.
Thank you. That was pretty impressive as well. Um, are there any further questions or comments from counsel regarding the 2023 Salary Ordinance for Elected Officials? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Um, you know, I didn't think about this earlier. Uh, but what about Judge Raper? He's not an elected official. He's a county employee. So would he receive the retention? That's not covered in this. I'm not seeing.
He, he is in the other section for county employees. Since he's not an elected official, he's in the other section.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't leave him out.
No, we didn't.
So he'll be covered in the next ordinance?
That, right.
Is that, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We will move then to, um, the ordinance 2022-43B, 2023 Salary Ordinance for Monroe County Employees. Counselor Deckard, would you please read that?
2023 Monroe County Government Employee Salary Ordinance, an ordinance adopting Monroe County, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for county employees, ordinance 2022-43B. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted the Indiana Code 36-2-3, which establishes the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County, and whereas IC 36-2-5-3 grants the Monroe County Council the power to, number one, fix the number of officers, deputies, and other employees; two, describe and classify positions and services; three, adopt schedules of compensation; and four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensation. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the number and compensation employees of the county from the period of January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, including all officers, deputies, assistants, and other employees whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by IC 36-2-5, this compensation is limited by the following lines of maximum levels of salary shown on the salary compensation grids. While payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the bit benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements, the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook is intended, the county council, that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. Outliers, special occupation employees, highway employees, correctional center officers, and staff, sheriff, mer- deputy's, and probation officers covered under a contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate, shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in their corresponding salary compensation grids. County auditor shall not issue pay warrants for any pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amounts. The calculation of the biweekly or hourly compensation rates may result in a slight variation, will not be adjusted at year end. Compensation paid on or after January 1st, 2023 and prior to midnight, December 31st, 2023, shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the salary ordinance in the Personnel Policy Handbook regardless of when the work is performed. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Any I'm not covered with the salary ordinance shall be governed by the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Job description, classification, definitions, beginning calendar year 2022, council approved, mov- moving use, moving using the updated classification and levels for Monroe County Government job descriptions. The listing of all classifications are outlined in Section A of the ordinance notes. Compensation levels have been updated using alphanumeric from A through E. Full-time hire day compensation step increase schedule. Employees attain a new compensation step increase level on the first day of the pay period, which includes the anniversary of the most recent full-time hire day. Compensation step increase schedules outlined in Section B in the salary ordinance. Midpoint higher compensation procedures. Employees who qualify nor approved by the council receive a midpoint higher. Status begins at the three-year level on the compensation grids applicable to the assigned job description classification level. The NPH only applies for the approved positions within the original requesting department. Midpoint higher status, three-year level, only applies to the base rate, base rate pay of any employee that is not including the years of service pertaining to longevity and/or vacation calculations. Listing of approved midpoint hires with term dates are outlined in Section C in the ordinance notes. Longevity scale. The effective date for longevity is the employee's most recent full-time hire date of employment with the county. All records must be verified by the auditor's office. Longevity pays based upon the following scheduled complete and uninterrupted years of service. A break in service will cause the employee to start his/her years of service over again. To be eligible for longevity payout, employee must still be employed on the day after his/her anniversary date. Elected officials do not receive county longevity pay. Employees except for probation officers whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate do not receive county longevity pay. The longevity scale is outlined in Section D of the ordinance notes. 2023 Retention Bonus Supplemental. During the 2023 calendar, all Monroe County employees, except those specified below, will receive a retention bonus supplemental paid out in a quarterly payments based on a schedule outlined in Section E in the ordinance notes. The part-type deputy coroner employees will also be eligible for receipt of the 2023 Retention Bonus Supplemental. Employees must be hired on or before the dates outlined and actively employed on the last day of the specified quarter. The supplemental payment is to be submitted separately from the regular payroll, the regular payroll claim. Prior years of service credit. Beginning calendar 2017, county council approved allowing complete years only of prior years of service per each term of full-time Monroe County government employment be applied when calculating the rehire. be applied when calculating the rehire of an employer's compensation step increase level. Months of service which are less than one full year shall not be counted nor combined in order to achieve a complete year service. For example, an employee who worked for one year and three months shall be credited with one year service. The council administrator must verify all prior service with employee personnel records and/or with the payroll per report before being applied to the returning employee's salary. The council administrator will notify the department head and the employee services department of the prior service credit total verified and granted. The council administrator will maintain a database of employees with confirmed prior service credit for future use. Any additional information under our explanation of the Monroe County Government salary schedule and compensation policies are included in the salary ordinance for the purposes of clarification and transparency. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender, Chief Deputy Public Defender, and the Monroe County Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe County Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the Monroe County Council, which are tied or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the state of Indiana, shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognized that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries, which are generally modified on January first. Additional detail, including defense services, defense services standard, standard G, Supreme Court compensation information, IC thirty-three dash thirty-nine dash six dash five, and IC thirty-six dash two dash three dash seventeen are incorporated by reference, presented to the County Council, Monroe County, Indiana, in Indiana, by the, by induction in full for the first time this eleventh day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for the reading. Um, are there any further questions or comments from council regarding the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance for Monroe County employees? Yes.
It's, you know, this is just one of these sentences that I had to read about three times before I figured out that it is correct, but it's really confusingly written. Employees except for probation officers whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate do not receive county longevity pay. It is correct. I just wonder if there's a way to rewrite that to be a little bit clearer.
Yes.
I, I just want to say that Molly and I struggled with that, and that's the language we came up.
Okay. I just like, I literally had to read it three times trying to figure out, wait, is it saying what I think it's saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. That is a tough one.
Okay. That's, that's fine. It was just a matter of style. I think it is.
Okay.
Correct.
An alternative proposal for that sentence now that I rethought it. We could make it read employees whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate do not receive county longevity pay. And then add a sentence that say probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive county longevity.
I think that would be clear.
Okay. I'll send you.
Move, we amend the salary ordinance to include the language that was just presented by Ms. Turner.
Second. Um. If we're moving, do we vote?
Yes.
Okay.
But roll call.
Could we, any discussion about that?
I didn't catch who seconded the amendment.
We jointly seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Okay, when I asked about Rick Raper, and then I was told what was taken care of in this. All right, does that mean he will get the retention bonus? I want to make sure that we're clear and we don't have hold on it.
No, he, he is not an exception. He's, he's in, so he is included in, his amounts have been included in the budget. So I'd already cleared and talked through everything with Lisa Abraham regarding his because he, um, he doesn't get paid as much as an elected official, but his salary is based like seventy-five percent, so.
Right.
So, and I mean, otherwise.
I'm not objecting to him getting it. I want to make sure he does.
He does get it.
Yes. Um. Any other questions or comments on this side up? Okay. Um, if there are none, then the first reading of the Monroe County twenty twenty-three salary ordinance is concluded. Thank you again for all that reading. That was very helpful and much faster than any one person probably could have done it. Um, we are at item seventeen on our agenda, and this is the discussion on the twenty twenty-three probation officer COLA increase. This item was tabled from October fourth. And, um, I'd like to reopen a discussion regarding an additional COLA increase for probation officers in twenty twenty-three. I would probably need a second, I guess.
Second.
Thanks. And Cheryl, did you want to introduce, reintroduce?
I would like to offer a recommendation and provide information.
Great.
And additionally, I want to make sure that Judge Decop has joined Zoom. Is that, is that the case? I had a message from Chief Probation Officer Linda Brady that.
I don't think that she's joining tonight. Um, I think what more would be more efficient is if the council had a discussion and decided which option, um, they were considering in regards to the probation salary, and then that information can be taken to Judge Decop. And the reason we're taking that information to Judge Decop is because there's an IC code, IC code thirty-six two sixteen point five three reads that in consultation with at least one judge of a court or division of a court authorized to impose probation and at least one probation officer, the county shall consult with before the adoption of a salary schedule. So we're not adopting the schedule tonight. So I think it's safe to have a discussion and then consult with Judge Decop based on whatever recommendation you're going to be making.
As I understand it, the consultation with Judge Decop is to be for the full council, not just individual members.
The statute does read the, um, county, city, or town fiscal body. So I think it would be the entire council. But it does not say how that consultation has to occur. So I think she could submit a memorandum or something in writing if she chooses, so.
She would be welcome to do that. She would be welcome to join us at a meeting, whatever is convenient.
So that sounds very good. Thank you. Well, picking up from our last meeting and just to summarize, my recommendation was that probation officers be given an additional salary increase so that their, uh, COLA would be equivalent with what other county employees are receiving. The, uh, the state of Indiana mandates a minimum of three point three three percent COLA. Uh, but the five percent COLA is what we have agreed up for county employees. And so, uh, we have calculations as to what this would cost, and I would like to review that for the public and for you all. First, let me specify, um, the actual increases. And these vary based on years of experience. In addition, Councilmember Iverson has talked to the council about increasing the initial probation officer's salary with zero years of experience to forty thousand dollars per year. And he asked that, I include this tonight in the discussion, so I will do so. So years of experience, zero. Salary of forty thousand dollars. Years of experience, one year, forty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Two years of experience, forty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Three years of experience, fifty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Four to nine years of experience, fifty-three thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Ten to fourteen years of experience, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Fifteen to nineteen years of experience, sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. And twenty-plus years of experience, seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So that would be the new minimum salary schedule that is recommended for probation officers. And to give you further information, um, this is not going to change our budget at all. It is simply going to change the salary schedule. And calculations by the staff of the probation department have provided some very interesting information. The five percent, uh, increase, uh, in the county general fund, uh, would be an additional thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. But projected reversions at the end of twenty twenty-three are in excess of that, uh, at thirty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. So there, in that fund, there may be no need for an additional appropriation even. Next, for the public safety lip fund, uh, the, the COLA five percent increase is two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and the projected reversions end of twenty-three are eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And finally, the special purpose lip fund, um, the total is ten thousand three hundred and twenty-six additional, and the projected reversions are not quite enough to meet that. That is, they are estimated to be nine thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So it would be a very small amount for the special purpose lip that may need to be appropriated. And that would not need to take place until, um, about October of, of next year. So I've given you a lot of information. I suppose I should summarize by saying the additional increase to treat our probation officers like our other county employees will cost us an additional forty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. And I think that would be money very well spent.
Okay.
I'm ready for questions.
Ready for questions. Thank you for that, um, information. Yeah, go ahead.
To quickly interject before questions, I think Judge Decop has joined via Zoom.
Oh, great.
She has.
Excellent. Um, okay, great. She's promoted to panelist. Um. So if, if Judge Decop wants to make comments, um, how, can she be, is she able to? Okay. Okay, terrific. So jump in at any point. Um. Wow, that is a lot of information and, um, a lot to think about. Do, do we want to start down here with questions? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McKim.
So I just want to make sure I understand your proposal here is to just amend the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance, but not the budget, and just assume that there's going to be enough slosh in the, in the reversions to be able to pay for it by the end of the year.
Exactly.
Okay. That's good.
I like the way you phrase that.
Slosh.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Councilor Hawke.
Because this really won't start until mid-year, uh, do, when we vote on the budgets for salaries, are we be voting on a total year? But it really won't start until mid-year. So are we talking about just the last half of twenty twenty-three? Are we talking about last half of twenty twenty-three and then the first half of twenty twenty-four?
I'm, I'm confused by your question, Ms. Hawke. I would say that my thinking of the salary is it's an annual salary and it is calculated and paid biweekly, uh, throughout the year, just like all employees' salaries are. And so it affects, um, the increase would, would affect, uh, everything starting with the first pay period. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yeah, so I, I'm kind of confused of, of what Councilor Hawke is asking.
I, I think she's talking about them being on a different schedule for when their increases might start. Is that the case?
Oh.
Because of this tied to the state budget.
I would rather refer to, uh, Mr. Hatfield because I can understand that process with regards to how they're paid and how they budget for it, so.
Welcome, Mr. Hatfield.
Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. Probation officer salaries are a calendar year. So any annual increases occur January and then through December. If we have step increases, they, they fall on the anniversary date, just like any other county employee. If it's during that pay period, that's when the step increasing goes into effect. But we are paid and the salary schedule is on a calendar year basis, January to December.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yep. Yeah, go ahead. I noticed on the last, uh, advertisement information for looking for a new probation officer, uh, part of what it was saying was that they were going to need their own transportation and reliable transportation. And I remember several years ago when I advocated strongly to get, that the county would provide vehicles for probation officers. And regretfully, I've not kept up to date with how many you have. Are you still receiving those from the county?
Yes, we, we do have several departmental vehicles that our staff are able to use. That's typically in the job description that we have somebody who has a valid driver's license, reliable transportation as a just in case. If all the vehicles are in use or maybe there's some that are, you know, being repaired or something like that, but we still need to do our jobs, then we'll pay our employees mileage and that to use their own transportation if that's necessary.
Be, because I thought that could be very off-putting to a lot of young folks that we know, uh, or at least in the past, we, a lot of the beginning probation officers would come from IU, uh, and they don't all have transportation. So, and, and I bet also the reason why there's such a turnover because they don't tend to make it their life work. They're just, it's a way for them to make money, fish out their college, whatever. And the other, so I'm, I'm wondering if we have to have that on that advertisement because it may slow down the ability to find good people.
I, I appreciate the concern and definitely something we'll review and take a look at as far as the advertisement goes. I know it's part of our job description itself, so, um, but we'll look at the advertisement because that's always a brief kind of job description. I would say one of the biggest issues we have right now in terms of hiring is the starting salary. That, to be quite honest, I mean, twenty twenty-three, the starting salary is like thirty-eight thousand for somebody who has to have a four-year college degree. In this, uh, school year, uh, state legislature put a law into effect that, uh, state legislature put a law into effect that all school contracts for teachers, another four-year degree, has to be a minimum of forty thousand dollars starting. Department of Child Services caseworkers, once they get through their initial cohort training, they are paid over forty thousand dollars. I can't tell you the number of times I've been on the phone with an applicant to explain to them the salary schedule and all the benefits that come with working as a probation officer in Monroe County, Indiana, and there are a lot. But when I get to that salary and people are going to have to take a pay cut to come to us, that's the end of the conversation. And that's what we're struggling with right now.
I have another question. I know that when Indianapolis, Marion County was advertising, they made it clear that if you didn't already have that degree, you had six months to finish out your degree. And go ahead, and is that the case throughout the state?
Well, to be a probation officer in the state of Indiana, you have to have a bachelor's degree. You've got to be 21 years of age, a US citizen, and be of good moral character, and that's locally defined. So if they are hiring prior to receiving the degree, they cannot be considered a probation officer at that point until they've received that degree. And then once they're on the job, they have one year to complete probation officer orientation or basically our initial statewide training. And then within six months, they have to pass a certifying exam. If they don't pass that exam or complete that training, they cease to be a probation officer in the state of Indiana until those things are completed. But so if they are hiring like that, they can't sign anything. They can't perform probation officer duties until that degree is complete.
And also, may I ask one more question? Of course. Also, at the last meeting, we were told that you had your, if I had the term, if I heard it right, that you had all of the field officer positions filled, having to do with, good thing, having to do with the WIS study. And is that, so is a field officer, I should know, but I don't, is how much different is that than a probation officer?
Yeah, so our field officers are non-degreed positions. They're on the civil poll schedule of the salary schedule. And fortunately, with the new WIS study, those salaries have increased greatly and we have finally filled all of our positions. Knock on wood, that'll stay that way for a good long time because we really want to keep valuable employees with us. So the differences with our field staff is again, they're non-degreed. They don't serve as probation officers. What they do is they go out and do our visits mainly on people who are in electronic monitoring. So we're talking about more of our serious offenders that are a threat to public safety. And so they're out four, five, six times a week visiting, you know, visiting offenders, I'm sorry, four, five, six times a week at their home, at their jobs, at other places where they're allowed to be in the community while they're under those conditions. As well, they do other work. You know, they'll pair up with probation officers to do other home visits as well. So it's not just that population, but we use them as a resource for us to help monitor our population out in the community.
So the starting salary for a field officer is even lower than the starting office salary for a probation officer?
You're testing my memory on that one. So it's a civil poll B, I think. So I'd have to look that up on, real quickly, but.
Do you want it for 2022 or for what it's going to be in 2023?
So 2023, the probation officer salary is thirty-eight thousand, I think, one oh seven. So I'm not sure what the civil poll B is for that at a start.
Yeah. Did you say that the field officers were non-degreed? Is that?
Correct.
They don't have that four-year degree?
It does not require a degree.
Okay.
So, you know, I can't remember, but I believe our correctional officers in the jail are similarly classified, though they're under a kind of a different contract. And my understanding is that, you know, they're starting somewhere in the forties, which is fantastic for them. But again, that's, you know, probation officers are starting at thirty-eight thousand one oh seven. Just, that's our struggle.
Mr. Hatfield, what did you say the level was civil?
B, I believe.
B, okay, the civil B for thirty-five hours? Is that what you're wanting? Okay. Civil, civil B thirty-five hours is an annual of thirty-seven for thirty-eight.
Entry. Entry.
That's, yeah, that's the base.
Now, they are receiving the full five percent COLA this year, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That's for 2023.
Yeah, that's including that. Other questions?
And I want to make sure I'm hearing what I've seen in the emails that I get from Linda Brady. People are not taking the positions and salary is part of that discussion, right? It's, I cannot take this job because this doesn't, this is not going to pay me enough, essentially.
Absolutely. We had another candidate for, that we were looking at for our CASP probation officers. So that's a Community Alternative Supervision Program, House Arrests, Electronic Monitoring, Case Load. We went all the way through the end of the background investigation and we're getting ready to set up a final interview. And when we called to set her up for a final interview, she had said she's sorry, but she had taken another job that was going to be somewhere in the mid-forties.
Yeah, just to make the comment, I had the privilege to be liaison to probations for a couple of years. And not this year, but a couple of years. And the amount of emails, particularly during the pandemic, I recall vividly that Ms. Brady and I had back and forth about this very issue over and over and vacancies was startled. And back then, that's why I talked about this frankly to a lot of council members. So I appreciate what you're saying very much.
Councilman McKim.
And I just want to remind everybody, you may not have seen it, but in one of the handouts we were given, it summarizes the two, the existing 2023 minimum salary schedule along with the first proposal, which is just 1.67% above the minimum. Then the second was, the second proposal is 1.67% above the minimum with an additional floor of forty thousand for the entry level. And so this is very helpful. I don't know, Cheryl, if you put this together. Whoever put this together, this is very helpful. Okay, thank you.
I think this is it.
And if I, if I may, that if you say 1.67% increase over the 2023 schedule, it's not quite right because the math won't equal a five percent. Because I think, I believe the intent is that the salary increase would be five percent from the 2022 salary. So really, if you want to do the math to make it equal, it'd be 1.6165% above the 2023 scale.
Right. See what you're saying.
Are there other questions?
Thought I saw Peter with a.
Peter, go ahead and have a question. Councilperson Iverson.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Hatfield while he's at the podium there. If we were to go ahead and make this change, would that have any impact on recidivism rates in our jail? That is to say, if we make sure there's enough POs out there, does that have an impact on the way that people come in and out of our jail?
I would say yes. I mean, because right now we've got several open positions in our department. And what happens when we have a vacancy is that we have to have other officers supervise those cases. So our caseloads increase. And when you have caseloads increasing, you afford yourself less time to spend with each individual client that we have. And so that takes away time of building skills. It takes away time of teaching new behaviors. It takes away time to reinforce and support, you know, positive steps they're making towards behavior change. So when we have those increased caseloads, it is very likely that we're going to see more problematic behavior that may result in additional time in jail and using those types of services in our community.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure on this, on this proposal, the sheet that has proposal one and two, does it, do the amount, do the salary amounts, the salary amounts accurate? Given what Mr. Hatfield just informed us, that the actual multiplier is 1.6165? Did I get that right?
Yes, what Counselor Munson read earlier is exactly a five percent increase over the 2022 schedule, which I believe is the intent that Counselor Munson has had.
Okay.
This is the column that is shaded beige.
Proposal number two?
Proposal number two, beige. Yes.
The only exception would be the forty thousand at the entry level.
Right. And that was also discussed at our last meeting and the reason for that was further explored this evening, and I think I think it makes good sense. I would like to, at this time, ask if we might consult with Judge Decoff, since she has taken time to be here. And we would like to have her comments on this proposal.
Hello, thank you. I'm sorry, I was not prepared to appear tonight, so you got to forgive me. I am very much appreciative that this conversation is going on and the proposal is being made. We, the Board of Judges, do support that this. You have to forgive me because I never know exactly what terminology that I should be using when proposals are done and how I'm supposed to make the proper language. But obviously, we support the 1.67. We believe that it would, that it's very beneficial to our people. I support the idea that we can raise the salaries, especially for incoming probation officers, to make it more attractive to work in Monroe County and work in our office. And so I was told tonight that this was going on and that you might need something from the judges for the statute. And I'm here to do that and to answer any questions and to basically indicate my support and my appreciation.
Thank you. Are there questions for Judge Decoff? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I wondered if there was any consideration of raising that entry level, that very first, to get them started, rather than raising everybody just, just that first year, that when they first start out. I know that went up more than the others, a bigger percent, but I just wondered if there was a way to adjust that. I mean, because if the point is you can't even get them to start at thirty-eight, will, you know, less than two thousand dollars more make a difference?
Was, you're asking, was there a consideration of an even further increase?
No, only the increasing the minimum of the entry level, right?
But maybe there's going to be, you know, if they're going to get that retention bonus as well, then they would be able to work toward getting that. So maybe that will help. And if they don't have to have a car, I think something has to be done about that when they're told they have to have a car. And if they don't really have to have it.
Yeah. I would encourage all of our departments to look at that requirement, if it exists, for any of their jobs. And consider whether or not that job truly requires someone to have that transportation. I mean, being able to get to the office is one thing. But if you're stating that they need a reliable vehicle of their own, that might be an undue burden and it could also be viewed unfavorably from an accessibility standpoint. There are plenty of folks who can do a lot of the jobs, but maybe for some reason or another, do not have a vehicle that they are physically capable of driving. I'm just throwing that out there. Are there other questions? Yeah.
A comment, please. On behalf of the council, I would like to apologize to Judge Decoff for this last-minute discussion. We didn't know until just shortly before the meeting that there was a requirement under state law that we consult with Judge in this matter. And I know we want, you would want us to follow state law. So we really appreciate you stepping in unexpectedly. Thank you very much.
Well, there's no apologies necessary, and you're exactly right. And I obviously would like all of us to follow the law, so I appreciate that. And there is no apology necessary, and I was glad to be able to join. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for, for the judge? I mean, I want to, yes.
Actually, my question is really more for Ms. Turner King. Does, does what we, the conversation we just have fulfill our statutory requirement for consultation?
I believe so. The statute just requires consultation.
Fantastic. Okay, I did have just a couple of questions that might sound a bit like they're on the devil's advocacy side of things. And, and I'm not sure who wants to answer them, but they're in response to some things that you said, Mr. Hatfield. And I'm curious as to if the state you mentioned was requiring a minimum of forty thousand dollars annually for teachers, a similarly four-year degreed position. And they're actually in control of setting the salaries for the probation officers. Why would we not expect them to be doing the same sort of level of salary for their probation officers?
Sure, so that was legislation put in, I think, not last session, the session before last, about the teachers and that future contracts had to be at least forty thousand dollars. So, you know, that was created by our legislature. Probation officer salaries are set by the judicial branch of government. So the state judiciary, the judicial conference or Board of Directors for the judicial conference are the ones who set the salary scale for probation officers. So two different branches of government, and that's why we have the two, two different things going on.
Is there advocacy going on with that branch of government to maybe think about increasing the minimum?
Yes.
Excellent. Good to know. I'm also curious if surrounding counties are at the same pay scale. So is, are other counties sticking with that, the same thirty-eight thousand-ish entry level?
So I don't know about all of our contiguous counties. I know Counselor Iverson had read through a list of several counties at the last meeting that are paying above the minimums. And many of them are within driving distance. So, you know, Marion County and several others that are within that kind of region do that. I don't know if Counselor Iverson still has that list handy. I don't have it handy in my hand.
I do not have that list handy as I am out of town. I might ask that maybe Counselor Munson has that list, but we can certainly go back through the minutes and recall that list as well.
Yeah, I can totally do that.
Oh, I think Ms. Brady might have that list. She just raised her hand.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so I don't have it completely memorized, but I think Marion County pays 8.3% above the minimum. And Johnson County pays above. Hendricks County pays the county longevity. But the, the one that's the closest, just I think probably, is the Johnson County. And also Hamilton County does. Vanderburgh County is another.
And also Hamilton County does. Vanderburgh County is another, Wells County. Those are a few that are on the list that I know for sure pay, pay above.
Okay. Thank you. I promise to watch the meeting when I get a moment. Are there any other questions from counsel or, or comments? Yeah.
I was just going to say, as far as the comment goes, thank you to Counselor Munson for bringing this to the attention of us as well, and Mr. Hatfield, and Ms. Brady and Judge DeKoff as well. And again, as we, you know, continue to talk about how we need to attract more folks to be employed with Monroe County, certainly us trying to, you know, raise our pay to coincide with the COLA would seem like the best thing to do. So I'm thankful that this is a discussion that is happening. And as the liaison, one of the other liaisons to the probation department, and I've learned a lot and continue to still learn, I'm thankful for this and definitely plan to support. So, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Yes.
Just very quickly, special thank you to Molly Turner King, our attorney, because if we hadn't had her advising us, we would not have been aware of the, the state requirement for consultation with Judge DeKoff.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, is this decision going to be made at the same time as we meet with the merit deputies and so forth? When we look at their request? Are we going to do these separately or are we going to look at them and say, these are the ones that we are going to be supporting? Or how are we going to do that?
That, that will be a total council decision. I have to have a 2023 salary ordinance adopted on the, on the 18th. So if you guys decide you want to include this, you can do it then. If you want to kick it down the road until December, you know, I mean, you have until then to.
These are not elected officials, so we could always.
You can always come and amend.
Next year as well. It would certainly be my intent to look at, at all of those together as a group to make sure that we're saying yes to one group. And then we're looking at merit deputies or, or the people working in the jail saying, well, yes, we did that. But now we're not going to the other. I, I've just, I'm just curious, what are, what our next step is?
Just to be clear, the merit deputies and the corrections officers did receive the 5% COLA for 2023, right?
Yes, they did.
And so what they're asking for is, is.
Is in addition.
Is in addition. So we, you know, I can see an argument for going ahead with this proposal because this is just basically equalizing the playing field. And that has been a very longstanding practice in Monroe County that we give all employees the same cost of living adjustment. So I'm, I'm, I understand what Counselor Hawke is saying and we'll certainly hear presentations from these other collective bargaining units. But I certainly don't have any heartburn at all about moving the probationers, probation officers up to the, the 5%.
And the other question is then, if for some reason, if whatever the state sets then for the next year, will we just bring all of the county employees up to meet whatever the state says? The state will then sort of be in charge of whatever our increase will be from now on. Is that what we're saying?
I don't think that's what we're saying.
I mean, or is this just going to be one year and that's it? I'm just trying, I don't know what we're doing.
It was for 2023. It was one year. It is not setting out a policy. And it's certainly not turning things over to the state to tell us how we should handle our increases.
And it will go away, assuming that the state's 2024 cost of living increase is greater than the 1.67%. It's going to wash away what we've, what we've just done anyway.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm saying. If they should have a higher increase for the following year than what we thought, what we might think we could do for the other county employees, will we meet what they're doing? And those are questions, and I think they're legitimate questions.
I don't think we could venture a guess at that right now.
That's next year's council.
Yep.
And their headache. And they'll figure that out at that time.
Whoever.
Whoever's elected to do that. Or not.
Porcellos. Any other comments? And I have a question for Michelle. If we were to recommend that support, supporting this proposal, is, is it your intent to try to then change the salary ordinance to reflect this and get this done by the 18th? Or would we be doing this afterwards?
No, all we would need to do is approve a, an updated or amended salary ordinance for the probation officers. Because currently what is in the salary, the salary ordinance is just a copy of the amended or the minimum. And then what we would do is address that a above the minimum grid has been applied. And that would be just included. So it would just be a spreadsheet, basically. And I would work with Troy and make sure that our numbers match based on the information provided here.
Okay.
Okay. So, but I mean, I don't, I, the salaries themselves are not reflected in
Right.
each individual line. We, we have everyone refer back to a grid, so.
Yes.
If, if we do this as an amendment to the 2023 salary ordinance, do we need to have two readings if it's not unanimous? Because I have the feeling that we're.
Tonight would be the first, I would assume tonight is your first reading and then.
All right. So I'm going to just go ahead and make the motion. So at least we have it there when first. Yes. So counsel, I move that we amend the 2023 salary ordinance to include proposal number two as laid out in the documentation that the council has provided.
Second.
Are there any further comments or questions on the proposed amendment?
Right. So it's just a first reading.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to, she can open it for discussion.
It's okay. Yeah. Understood. Are there any further comments or questions from counsel? Um, public comments? Are there any members of the public out there at all who wish to comment? Okay. Well, that then rounds out the, the discussion. And your motion stands as sort of a proposed amendment. Do we want?
It's a first reading.
It's, yeah, it's just a first reading.
All right. So it's attached. Looked on there. All right. Sounds great. Um, in that case, then let's move to item 18, which is long awaited.
Counsel, I move to approve the August 23rd, 2022 work session summary minutes as presented.
Second.
Do we have any council members who would like to change or edit or otherwise modify the minutes? All right. So do I have to do a, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel McCann?
Yes.
Counsel Decard?
Yes.
Counsel Wilt?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Hawke?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Are there any comments from council members on any items that they like to bring up or?
So before Counsel Iverson does it, I'll go ahead and do it before he does. Today is the absolute last day for people to register some vote. And early voting starts tomorrow. So if there is anybody that is still burning the midnight oil of trying to register to vote or just in general to check your voter registration status, please do so. I believe you can go to indiana voters ian.gov to check your voter registration status or register to vote. And even if you think that you are, definitely just check it anyway, just to be on the safe side so that we can all do our civic duty and do what we feel we need to do.
Thank you. Good reminder. Any other comments? Okay. All right. Well, then this meeting is adjourned.